It's time to call the meeting to order. Any indication?
Well, again, we thank you for tonight and we thank you for these people who are willing to serve on the city commission and I pray for the people that are employed here. I pray for the discussions that are going to be held here tonight and I pray for wisdom in Jesus name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There any changes to the agenda?
I'm moving to a pretty clean agenda.
To move, move by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Bellin to approve the agenda, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments, this is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We would request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully and limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm going to tell you. So I'm, I'm the white, why did I'm the pastor of the Christian church, enough volume rise. So I live at eight eleven west fifth street. And for the last four years, are you talking to me?
I am now.
Okay. For the last four years, I thought pretty fast. I have wanted to open up a Christian daycare in this town, a daycare period. All right, we've had five closed and two open, I think, something like that. We need a lot of help. I called the fire chief today and Bruno and they came out to the church and inspected our facility. I will tell you, for four years, we've been trying to open a daycare and I'm talking to the people who don't make the rules, by the way. So as a citizen, I just want to say, it is very hard to open up a daycare in a commercial facility without having some workarounds, right Bruno? Chief, right? And so if there's anybody that knows how to do this better than I do publicly, if we could get some help, it would be great. We have qualified teachers. We are all highly educated. I've got licensed daycare people that will come work for us. We can get this going. That's because we're just a bunch of men.
You be more specific, what is your home? What's your red wire?
The facility is a hundred years old. And there's got to be a workaround around that, but there's got to be something we can do about that. Um, but it's KDHE and some of the rules, you know, it's a hundred thousand dollars to put a sprinkler system in the church. There's a big issue. You guys got any grant money laying around, by the way? I just wondered about that. And we don't have, uh, we have a highly educated staff that don't know how to write grants. So thank you for your time.
And you talked to Nikki from Cloud Corp. She had grants and all the information.
See, we just, I know her too. You think I would ask her?
You're right.
Yeah.
That's first thing that.
Any suggestions? You could email me at Pastor Dwight at fellowshipchristian.church. I think you're doing a wonderful job, by the way. We need another daycare. We got a huge facility that is closed ninety percent of the time. We'd like to be open ninety percent of the time.
Have you talked to KDHE?
Well, you already started, yeah. Yeah, we already started.
I can tell you this much from just knowing people, they will not work around stuff though. Like if you have something, it's gotta be that way.
Yeah.
It's not gonna work.
And when you have a hundred year old building.
It's gonna be tough.
It's gonna be tough.
And there are some people I know that will come in and help out.
So, okay. Pastor Dwight at fellowshipchristian.church is the easiest way to get home. Thank you for your time.
No, for sure, but I think this is the time where I should probably do this. I'm there at Ford and she remember last month, I have a couple houses that were on the demolition thing. And referring to the property at Ivo four tenth street, I believe it is. As you know, I've had a lot of problems this year, health wise and otherwise. But I found it out out there when I was out there today till about two o'clock. Get pretty hot. My goal was originally to have that house down this year. And I want to go in and take out what I would like to, and then I would like to put that into the program of Dr. Bruno that you have for demolition, a house where we share the cost to finish it up. As if you've been by there, it has concrete basement type thing and a few things like that, which I have no way to remove and things like that. But it does have some things that I would like to get out of there. And there are some very good two bays, which I'll probably take, my wife wants some of the bricks and so forth. So anyhow, that's my goal for that one. And I still have that goal now that I'm getting back where I can work a lot. I'm much slower than I used to be, but at least God has given me the ability to get out and work a little bit now. And so I still think I can get it down before then. As to the one, I believe it's two twenty-nine west first street. That house I would like to renovate. And I will.
You got one minute.
I will go ahead and finish the, I'll do some things to button it up right now. And then I will, I have to do the inside and I have already tore off some of the walls and so forth. I will work with Bruno and get some contractors to help me with that. And we will go ahead and bring that up to date, or I will sell it to a contractor to and get it refurbished for him. Well, it won't refurbish it. He may go ahead and tear it down and build a place once he gets it through light commercial or something like that. So we'll take care. I will, I will work with Bruno. Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm Randy Greenwood. I live at six twenty-one west sixth street here in Concordia. I'm the owner of Greenwood Sales and Service at Concordia. I provide heating, air conditioning, plumbing, electrical work for affordable price for most part. I recycle my air conditioning units, furnaces and stuff like that. When I take them out, so I can standard to good parts to resell to people at a full price. And on January sixth, I got a nuisance notice because I had all this stuff off backyard of one of my run over, nobody in there because I haven't reworked yet. But I know it is. I didn't like the way we were informed by this nuisance sign in my front of my house there. Which you can't see and the stuff I had in the backyard up there. And yet they put that nice big sign out there saying this is a nuisance and the house looks real good to me. If you want to see a picture, I got one of them. We just took it. But, you know, I don't understand why I've got to notice this because I've been doing this for thirty-five years. And I don't say that wrong, but I, yes, I do take it in and then sit it out and I strip it down. Then when I get a trail pool, I haul it off to auto outlet to get rid of scrap metal. But when we got this other thing, I would call up the city and say, what's going on here? And they said, I'm a scrapper and you can't scrap in the city. But I'm a group, I thought I was doing recycling myself. And I thought that was the whole thing in this country anymore to recycle everything you can.
One minute.
Okay. But now that's the whole thing, you know? I've been doing this thirty-five years and all of a sudden, I'm told I can't work outside in the yard to do this scrapping. I have to do it from inside. And I don't understand why. Just because I know one person who got aggravated over the fourth of July weekend because he got reported for blowing off fireworks in somebody else's yard. And I don't think one person should come in and be on and tell me what to do. And that's basically it. I would rather have my wife do it, but she better speak for that. But she won't do it. She said, I gotta do it. Christian, thank you.
Randy, what was the address?
Uh, my house there.
Wherever you got the nuisance.
Oh, where? And that was at six twenty-four west seventh street.
Thank you.
And we called the city up and said, I hauled off the place and they said, well, you've got appliances outside. And I know a lot of air conditioner producers as appliances myself. If that's the case, you need to remove everyone in town so nobody can have any air conditioner because they're all outside.
Do you, do you have commercial property for your business or do you just rent?
I just work, I work out of my house. I have been for thirty-five years.
Curious. Okay, thank you.
Are the members of the public, have a document comments? Anyone online? Moving forward with proclamations, recognitions, presentations, the Cloud Corp quarterly report.
Good evening. First of all, thank you all for your service to the city of Concordia. It's very much appreciated. I know that I had submitted our quarterly report and I'm sure that all of you have had an opportunity to glimpse through it. So if I just touch quickly on some of the meetings that stand out to me in our second quarter that I truly enjoyed would be our bankers breakfast that we hosted with Northwest Kansas EICI and Al Eichelberger of SBDC with Capital Access Center, where we presented the information to the bankers of what we can do at Cloud Corp with our e-community gap loan financing and how we can be assistance to businesses and Capital Access Center also can provide some free services to people that are needing some help with advice and getting their businesses off the ground. I was excited to have one of the bankers that is on our finance committee sit in one of our meetings and say, you know, I'm just hearing more and more about Cloud Corp and this gap loan financing. So to me, that was very exciting to have one of the bankers say they're beginning to hear more and more about Cloud Corp. One of the other meetings that stands out to me would be exciting, our infill housing meetings with property owners. Those are exciting things that are happening towards our project that we're partnered with the city of Concordia on. And then obviously, I enjoy getting out of town sometimes to go listen to what other economic development directors have going on. And I have shared this with a few of you that it's nice to have those conversations and find out how great things are in Cloud County when you sit down and have conversations. So very excited to be part of Cloud County Economic Development. Community involvement, I know that you can read through that. I truly have enjoyed going out and presenting to the Lions Club, ProzaCon and Rotary and then hearing the feedback and answering the questions of the things that are happening with the housing, with childcare and with some of the development. And then have also had some visits with our, some of our businesses in the community and in the county. Get in the cloud. I know all of you have heard about that. It almost fall into the next quarter, but it happened at the end of June. I know it was reported on in July. But wow, just wow. We had eleven applications come through. It was quite a process of four hundred page binder that the Get in the Cloud Committee had to go through before the presentations. It was a very difficult process for the committee to make the suggestions, but as you can see, the breakdown of what the committee decided and then I presented that to the county commissioners and they approved. So very exciting and actually two of these projects have already submitted invoices and are already closed out for that year. So it's exciting how quickly things are moving and taking off. Our e-community, so from June of twenty twenty-two until the end of June of twenty twenty-three, Cloud Corp had one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we could loan through Network Kansas and this e-community gap loan. We did process in the first quarter and second quarter, a total of sixty thousand dollars in loans. And of those sixty thousand dollars, thirteen thousand five hundred came in grants. That's in partnership with the Patterson Foundation with the e-community. So it's just neat how there's things that are partnered up to be able to help the businesses in our county. I did list some of the businesses that we worked with to get the first two. We've restarted our one hundred and fifty thousand for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four with Network Kansas. So I've had so many conversations, I think I documented, I had fourteen e-community conversations with businesses in our county just inquiring about what that loan is and what they can do and if there's a possibility that they can receive a grant that goes towards that loan. Other exciting happenings, I've listed our housing project and all the AME has been doing and all of the conversations and all of the decisions that all of you have been making and things that are taking off. I'm, I'm just very excited and I think this is going to be a really neat project and I'm so thankful to be part of that. The daily happenings, we had ten participants in our April session for the small business development classes. I've been out placing Cloud Corp assisted signs at the businesses that we have been working with, whether it was Get in the Cloud or it was the e-community or for example, working with Tom Frederickson to get the business north. So just a lot of posting of those signs to let people know how Cloud Corp is involved. Third quarter focus, I'm working towards finalizing, securing sixty thousand dollars for recruitment incentives for all of Cloud County. And it's quite a process, but I'm working with Northwest Kansas EICI to get these funds. And I have established a committee that helps come up with the plan and then I just have to package it all together and get that submitted and hopefully we'll be able to have that money in our hands soon to be able to distribute for workforce incentives. So a lot of exciting things happening. Obviously, as all of you know, there is even more exciting things happening that I just can't discuss right now. But when the time is right, we'll find out about all of those exciting things. Any questions? Well, that is the second quarter report. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Now the twenty twenty-four budget public hearing. The public hearing is now open. There any comments on this item?
I'll just speak to the main points. We are not going to increase our revenue neutral rate. That would make it at forty-eight point eight two two mils. And some of the other important points were that we did so far approve a four percent cola for all employees. We've also allowed for fifty-one thousand dollars to go to increase wages in the dispatch fire EMS departments to bring them up closer to average. There was estimated two percent increase in health insurance costs through Blue Cross and at this time that is what we are staying with. And the city is absorbing that cost of about thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. And basically at the end of the year, we are looking at having a reserve adder better than the year before. And not having to increase on those.
Any questions?
To be clear though, we're looking at other options. Yes, still. At what point will we be able to take a peek at that, especially after last week's kind of, it's probably next week.
So what we have is we are, how do I describe that? Stacy. Alicia Vaughn, our hub agent, did go out and request quotes from others. And two companies declined to quote us and then we did get one other offer. So we're about halfway through that offer right now to take a look at that, but it's, it's not looking as good as the offer and not as good for our employees as we cross. We still want to finish going through that. So we'll send you a written summary of that analysis here, hopefully by the beginning of next week.
Other questions? Any other public comments? Hearing none. At this point, the public hearing is now closed. Moving on to our action agenda, approval of the two thousand twenty-four budget.
I approved the twenty twenty-four budget as.
So moved by Commissioner Bellin, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the two thousand twenty-four budget as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the minutes of the July seventeenth, July nineteenth. Special meeting, the adjourned meeting and the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of July seventeen from July nineteenth meeting.
So moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of July seventeenth and July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meetings. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance fourteen. Questions about this?
To approve appropriation ordinance number fourteen.
Moved by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve appropriation ordinance fourteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to image trend ambulance billing software.
Good evening. If you recall a while back, we switched over to image trend for our fire EMS and our whole reporting system. Image trend also has a billing system. Current billing system, we've been using Harrison software, been using since before two thousand six. We don't know exactly when it was taught. That's when the records go back. What we'd like to do is try to get it into one system to make reporting and everything just easier. We now have to do the Medicare, I just like the Medicare cost record now, just like what everyone else has to do. So having it in one system would make that recording system a lot easier than what we've gone through the past two years. The system would also allow us to be in the nearest timeframe so the insurance companies can start sending it directly to us. So the paper checks. And then this would have an option to, at some point, that the patients be able to bill, to pay online directly. It's gonna take a little bit of time to ramp everything up. It's not, we're not gonna do everything in one shot. That way we can take it slow and get the processes done. Cost for the first year, seven thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents. After that, it'd be two thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents with an extra reoccurring of one thousand dollars. That one thousand dollars allows patients to be able to pay online with their credit cards for the bills and go directly to the system. This will allow us to do the reports and stuff that we need. It's just going to be a lot easier and allow multiple people in the system at one time. You have any questions?
Right now, only one person can be in the system.
Yes.
And do we, do we pay annually for the other billing that we have?
Currently, we pay about a thousand dollars a year. So nine hundred is the change. So this is more expensive, but it has a lot more reporting systems that we're going to use.
Is this going to be as secure since it's available?
Yes, this is a secure, it meets all the HIPAA and everything. It's just with our EMS system. So it's just as secure as that.
And so anybody but you and James took the, did that?
Just me. James didn't go out and do that. So it's Deanna, me right now.
So currently, the James getting certified.
James is getting certified online, but he's not, you know, so right now it'd be Deanna, me and Amber getting into the system.
And somebody or somehow it will monitor that thousand extra to make sure that it kind of pays for itself.
Correct. Are there any other fees associated with that when people pay online?
As far as we're understanding it's no, it's through the system and it's supposed to be, we're going to be doing some more process of the way they're talking, there's no other.
Like no fees to the city nor to the, the patients?
That's what, that's what I understand right now. The other thing that this system does have is a insurance check system. So sometimes when we also maybe we may not have the most accurate insurance information and this does a search for that person. So we can try to get the appropriate people, try to get the income.
Is the twenty-seven sixty-seven fifty then, is that like, is that a subscription service?
It's a yearly.
Which is every software is pretty much going.
Harrison software is the cheapest right now, but it's also a antiquated, it's, the system's been that way since two thousand six.
Then that gives you the updates and the security.
And it's all stored on the cloud. So we don't have it on a server. If our server was to go down or was to be hacked, it's all on their system for the security side of it.
So is the yearly the guaranteed or is it going to go up every year or?
Right now, it's guaranteed for two years and then it will be half, like do the price just like the other one.
What other communities are you aware of that are using the image trend?
The image trend billing, there are several different places in Kansas starting to go to that. Kansas as an EMS service about four years ago went to image trend. So everyone's just kind of getting on board with it. There's quite a few out of the commerce that use the image trend billing system, both in private companies and in public. So everyone says it seems to be pretty good. If you can run the reports off the image trend system, it will have to cost.
Generally in Kansas, most people are switching.
Slowly. I certainly, I, I think that there is a value having a more streamlined medical billing system, especially the being able to run a reference for insurance. I would be interested in that. Sometimes it's difficult to track that down. So I think that the, the upfront cost seems somewhat significant, but I think that staff time and increased, hopefully increased billing efficiency. Manage that and just make for an overall better system.
So actually then you're paying a thousand dollars every year extra.
So thirty-seven sixty-seven is really what.
Yeah, so you're.
And that other one, that's, that's that option. It's kind of, we could add it later too. But that's gives the people the option to pay at home and we do get a lot of phone calls on that. Especially in after hours, they're off from the front, people trying to pay that bill and it's one of those hard ones to tell somebody, we can't take that. So where are we losing some money because they can't get back because they're at work. So.
Is it, how many transactions? I mean, for a thousand dollars, how many transactions do you, do you process in a year?
To tell you the truth, that's part of the problem with Harrison software and the billing side and the income side of it. I don't get to see very much of it because it's on a separate system. So I could tell you, if you guys happen to know that.
Well, right now, the credit cards are good.
But are you asking for a thousand dollars? Is there a limit to the, you're only allowed four hundred ninety-nine transactions? And if you get five hundred, that it costs more or?
No, I'm just curious. I mean, you have, how much is it per user essentially? If you, if you give a hundred ambulance rides, then you're, you're paying a hundred dollars per person or no? Ten dollars per person if you give, you know what I mean? If they want to pay online. So like what's, I'm just weighing the pros and cons of, of having that available. Yeah, you're gonna have some, and everyone is going to like online pay. I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just curious how many, like how many rides are given? And how many of those people are actually going to need? Like how many, you get three people a year complaining or?
In the past month, I've taken personally five phone calls, people trying to pay. Online, well, by credit card after hours.
Okay.
So.
Can they pay, they can pay by credit card during the day? It's just after hours.
That's not understanding.
They could pay over the phone by credit card right now.
But they have to call in during business hours, correct?
Which is eight to five Monday through Friday?
Eight to four thirty.
Eight to four thirty.
I think it's a real convenience for people. I think a lot of people will use that. I definitely think that.
And that's one of those things we should be able to keep a good count on. I'm gonna say this, first year it may not be as much, but it's something we can't drop off too. It's an additive thing that we can't drop off later if it's not being used and we choose, but I think it's going to get used quite a bit.
We got this warning about this too, because there is a way within our other system, correct if I'm wrong, that we can set up online payments for this. But when those online payments come in, it's going to be more difficult to tie that payment back to the specific ambulance bill. Because when they pay, am I saying this right? When they pay online for a regular system, if we set it up that way. Because when they pay, am I saying this right? When they pay online for a regular system, if we set it up that way, they won't be able to enter information about their ambulance run. If they use this, it ties it directly to the ambulance run. So if it's put it up in a regular system, it's gonna be more work on staffs. And to try to tie that back together, they may make mistakes as for us.
Eric, that initial amount probably is for transferring all the information to that also. That's a big share of the cost. Because we had the same thing with our other software. We could have typed everything in ourselves. That would have taken weeks.
And and that's one of the things I learned with image trend on the other side too. I've been creating reports. That if we would have done before we accepted and went full open, that they would have created for us. So some reports, we're figuring it out now what reports we're allowing, we're having create based on first one instead of using my time later. Trying to figure out how to do it.
I I think it seems like a good investment. I would, I would like to know, you know, like evaluating next year how much that additional is used or not. Or just to make sure that it's useful.
Right, so if we average five calls a month, sixty a year, that's looking at seventeen dollars per state of payment. Right, is is that value there to get the money? What's the staff time that would be associated with taking that call manually applying the payments? And I think we started getting pretty close to the end. Eagle, but it'd be good to know that and have that information, see what we're really looking at. An estimate of employee saving versus value.
I'm going to approve image trend billing bridge from image trend for eight thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents. For the first year and three thousand seven hundred sixty seven fifty annually.
New by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hutchinson to approve image trend billing, image trend billing bridge. From image trend for eight thousand five hundred seventeen dollars fifty cents for the first year, three thousand seven hundred sixty seven dollars fifty cents annually. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to bids for demolition of condemned structures.
And commissioners, these are three of the properties that were part of the public hearing process, July fifth. And we're condemned by resolution, given zero days. To start the process, so that allowed us to put it out there immediately. We did that and they come back and uh you've got the copy of the bids there and recommend. Take a little bit from Dalton Dirt Works for six hundred and forty and fifty dollars. The other bid was for an end line construction out in Marysville, I believe, Eric. The twenty six thousand seven hundred and fifty for all three properties. Any questions?
Will you be able to get to them pretty quickly?
I doubt it. And the reason I did is because I've worked with this company multiple times and they, they're farmers. And they like to work in the fall and then after the harvest. So I. I like working with them. They're reasonably priced. You know, it's something I think that we gotta, well, I think we have, uh uh technically, my policy, we don't have to. But I think we like to, once we get approval to do it, we like to have it started within sixty days. I meant to contact all today, uh about a couple other coming up issues possibly, but. Uh you know, we got to, so I'll, I can get a feel for it, but I would suspect, and I can push them. I mean, they'll throw it, but we had one they were gonna do and they were gonna come one week and then they didn't show up. I called them and said, well, we got a terrorist job and we'll be there two weeks. So they did, did a fine job. I think that was actually on Tillman Guard project up there on Eleventh Street. So they may not be right on top of it, but they, once they start, they will come to town and do them all. They're more on a shot and be done. But it might be all, it's possibly in early winter before they get started.
But they're more local.
There I know though, there, yeah, yeah, that that company, yeah, they need to.
I'm going to accept a little bit of sixteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars from Dalton Dirt Works. For the demolition of the structure in one nineteen Washington, two eighteen West First and one thousand three thousand.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Bellin to accept a little bit of sixteen thousand four hundred fifty from Dalton Dirt Works for the demolition of structures. At one nineteen Washington, two eighteen West First and one thousand three Valley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll contact all and see when they plan. So if you're a lot, you'll understand how you can do that.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty three thirty two oh four, trailer and RV parking. Um Chief and I are going to tag team these. Uh so you'll see on the memo, it it's become an issue lately. Uh with trailers and and some of our recreational vehicles being parked on the streets. Uh to a point where it's become a danger uh to the community. Um there's numerous places where we have trailers parked on streets and only one car could get down that street if they were lucky. Uh so it's become a danger. It's a liability for the property owners, to be honest with you as well. Um so we've received some complaints. Um I've driven quite a few of these and and. I can understand where those complaints are coming from. Uh so Chief, I kind of worked on this and uh I guess if you have some questions, go ahead and let us know. But really, kind of what we want to do here is is kind of ensure the safety of the community and uh and try to limit these. You know, we're not trying to keep people from being able to park stuff on the streets. But there, you know, some of these areas in town are older areas with narrower streets. And you park a trailer and some of these are rather large trailers and they stay there for a significant period of time. Uh recreational vehicles parked, they stay there for a significant period of time. It is a danger. If, you know, if, what if I can't see somebody coming or what if a kid guards out or whatever it may be? So there's a lot of things that have kind of finally brought this to a point where we're like, okay, we have to do something about this. We did do a little bit of research as well, quite a few communities and actually had to go to this uh because it has become a problem. Uh this actually is modeled after. I don't remember where we pulled this one from.
Uh this is kind of Abilene.
Abilene, that's right, Davidson County, so we're at, so uh we were taking any questions. I bet Chief could probably answer better than I could.
Um I think the only question really that I had about it was the the forty eight hour deadline. Um like possibly like over a weekend or something. And and this is only unattached, right? So if the trailer is attached to a like a working vehicle.
Yes.
Then that's different.
Yes, yes. I- if it's unattached, that's forty eight hours.
Okay, and what's the significance of the forty eight hours? And my thought of that was just like, you know, if you were gonna use a trailer over a weekend and you got it on Friday and then moved it on Monday, forty eight hours doesn't give you enough time to do that. That that's really my only.
Yes, so basically, we just kind of model, model that after the rest of the ordinances that we've. Got around from different communities as well, but we feel like if it goes any longer, then it becomes stagnant and then they don't move it. So if we put a forty eight hour time period on it, it seems to keep people knowing that, hey, I gotta move this in a couple days and. I think there's some times that we could probably talk to them and give them a little bit of leniency if they're moving debris or whatever it is out of it. I mean, it's not, we're not gonna just target them right away, but it's 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 just to keep people, keep the the vehicles and trailers moving.
Right.
And I think kind of the goal of this too is is to keep those folks who would be parking it there and just leaving it there. Let's say somebody, you know, and we happen to stop by and they're like, hey, I'm actively doing something with this and working this video. A lot of this is gonna be kind of discretionary. So I don't, you know, I I don't foresee that being an issue of someone's like, hey, I'm moving, I'm unloading things. And they're not necessarily gonna be in that one exact space the whole time. They may be moving it around, load the stuff up, so.
We have one individual in town that we've talked to about, has three trailers around the block that basically said you can't do nothing because you have nothing in writing, which is kind of true because we have no ordinances or anything that may um gives us the power to have it moved. So that's kind of why we came to this.
Yes, I've finally kind of prompted a lot of this.
Yeah, do you feel like it would impede that if you if you changed it to seventy two hours?
I mean, I don't, I.
I mean, I don't think that's an issue.
I don't necessarily have an issue.
And I see what you're saying over the weekend. I I mean, I'm good with.
I guess like if you're, I mean, I think with ordinances, people want to follow the rules. I think most people want to do what's right. And I see what you're saying. Well, there's latency, but the rules are the rules. So I mean, I hear what you're saying, but the rules are the rules.
Not really, it's discretionary. So if there was this, here's the thing. The rules are hard and fast, but at the same time, there's a human function to them. So if I'm an officer and I go over there and like, hey, yeah, I have this trailer parked here, I'm moving out. Yeah, no officer on our force is like, no, now you get a ticket. But I mean, I I understand if there's a concern. I mean, seventy two versus forty eight isn't gonna make or break anything. Um but at some point in time, we have, that, you know, there there reaches a point where it's like, well, we gotta have something.
I I think we're there.
I think Amy brings up a really good concern and I think that have, if we're going to have an ordinance, let's have it be in a way. To where we we offer the individual the flexibility that they need if they're actively working on it. But we also have the 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 specific time where we can address an issue that's been ongoing, right? I mean, I think the person that's actively working with the trailer, give them the time that they need to do it. But the person who's got them parked and we can't do anything about it, we have, I think a seventy two hour is a nice balance where we give them over the weekend. That's that's the maximum time. That we really need to have. It gives us the, that's the intensity that we're looking for in this ordinance.
Well, and also that goes hand in hand with our abandoned vehicles on streets. It's seventy two hours time we put the yellow or the winch sticker on it. They have seventy two hours to move it or else it gets towed. So I mean, it it would go hand in hand with that.
I I'm more in favor of the seventy two hours, just sheerly because of the weekend thing and and trying to not have to navigate the. You know, um but I hear what you're saying, Justin. I I.
Yeah, I just always, every, every time I turn around, somebody's like, what, wait, what if I have that?
Yeah, no, I understand there's.
But yeah, yeah, exactly. And that's.
We were just trying to set.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
No, I think it's, I think it's good. And I think, I think the the bottom line is that the person that's actively working with the trailer over the course of a weekend. It's gonna be a completely different scenario than the person that's kind of scarred for the last eight months. Uh but this ordinance then provides the the clarification that they need to be able to give something to do. And I think just to make sure that person is staying within that, oh, well, I've got it, I've got to hook it up and move to a different set of, I don't want to be in violation of a lot.
Well, right. And so then does that matter, the seventy two hours versus the forty eight hours if if they're just gonna move it to a different spot on the street or something? Um every three days versus every forty eight hours, if you're gonna have those issues, you'd probably have them regardless of the forty eight or seventy two hours.
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly. And that's one of those things, you know, if somebody's like, oh, hold on, let me move it down a little bit. It's kind of the same scenario because I actually pulled this stunt one time in a parking spot where they're like, you can only park here for three hours. I was in Pega, like, okay, well, cool. I'll drive down the street, park down here. I got another three hours. Nope, you don't. So they will give you a parking ticket for that. So it's one of those where it's like, hey, just because you moved it twenty feet in front of your house doesn't mean that you're, you know, the time that's reset, so.
But where's it say that?
It doesn't explicitly, just, it was just something I thought of right now.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, that's kind of one of those things. I don't know if we can account for everything, but I guess if we needed to build in something like that to say. I don't know how we would order something like that, but I could figure out something, you know, something along the lines of, you know, uh.
Is there someplace in town or even in the county that people can park their trailer and? I mean, if they.
There are store links, yeah, there's like door.
There's several that there's no, they park their camper or whatever on the street because there is absolutely no place to put that.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, again, I know we can't count for everything, but.
Well, the other, the other thought that I had, I mean, when we talked about this at a prior meeting is once somebody's told not to have their trailer on the street, then they're gonna park it in their yard. And we don't have an ordinance saying you can't park a trailer in your front yard. And so you just, you know, you remedy one thing, which is for safety. So that part, you know, like when it obstructs you or people might hit it because it's been parked for days, but you know, like remedying one thing with another. Then they're in the yards sometimes. And and that, that there's a lot of trailers parked in yards too and.
Yeah, and it.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we're kind, yeah, I feel like sometimes when it comes to this stuff and we try to, you know, when we have an issue, we're like, hey, we need to try to do. And then they will figure out another way to do it. We're just kind of chasing our tail with some of this stuff, but we.
Make a better trap, make a better mouse.
Yeah, we've got to have something to say, hey, you can't do this and then.
I genuinely in favor of the ordinance that does allow parking in yards.
Unfortunately, I'm working on right now where you can put tents because we have some homeless people in town. They're just putting tents wherever and we really don't have nothing to enforce that.
You know, that chasing your tail thing I just said.
There, it really isn't because yards here are so small, there really isn't that much availability for for off-street parking anyway. And even at, you know, the people who are trying to in courtesy park off the street and especially in snow routes are just parking on their grass. So my maybe suggestion, thought was the citywide cleanup that we do is is a benefit to the community in that way. And for beautification and helps out our citizens, would we be able to do something where we could allow for um like city employees to deliver gravel and the um into a prepared area to allow to extend a driveway.
Extend driveway or something.
Where like where the city would essentially provide the delivery and the labor for that, kind of similar to the sidewalk program. Where, you know, where concrete can be fairly expensive, but give off-street parking that's still appealing to a prepared area within guidelines. Versus just parking in a front yard on grass and getting out in the dirt, which is, you know, who wants to walk in the mud when it's raining or the snow?
I mean, I think that's, that'd probably be a program we'd have to create, we'd have to have funding for it and all that, but I don't think it's turned right. In certain circumstances, you know, I like it, you know.
And also then, I mean, then maybe like those ordinances, like I know within the city, people don't want to necessarily be. Micro-managed all their their property and their stuff.
Yeah.
But we have given them the ability or way to do that in a more attractive um like beautifying our city kind of a way.
And we really try, I mean, I know our our chief and I have and and I talked to a lot of folks and they say we really try not to micro-manage folks. And that's why a lot of the times when we finally bring these, like, people are like, well, I've been doing this forever. It's like, I know. Because we were trying to work with everybody, we were trying to make this work or somehow make, and it just reached a point where it's like, okay, we're not trying to micro-manage, but. Nobody's working with us here. So this is now what our next step is. I I, so I I totally understand where you're coming from. I think seventy two hours is fine. I think if we just design some type of a program in the future or something for, you know, help somebody with some gravel.
Well, I think that like a program like that implemented at the same time of as an ordinance would be, would be very beneficial.
Yeah, I think a lot of it would come down to where are we getting money from for that, that kind of stuff too.
Well, but if you're, I mean, if you're not paying for the gravel, just like the sidewalks and do we, I mean, I guess it would be a matter of time and fuel.
And I just think what I would gravel, whether that constitutes a hard surface that would be allowed by zoning and subdivision regulations. So we need to get work through about that suggestion to see if that would fit with other regulations.
Right.
I I do wonder um the dress, Ashley's concern about something about uh some sort of. Perimeter adjacent to the property owners.
Yeah, I was.
Right, like within, within five hundred feet.
Yeah, like. Try to, I'm trying to think of the right terminology, but basically we would, we could, we could build in something there that said, you know, incremental moving of, you know, a trailer. Doesn't, that doesn't reset the time period or I could, we could make some language that that meets that uh um.
Remember, we designate, yeah.
Yeah.
I can't just roll forward five feet and I'm good.
Yeah.
We can't be adjacent to the property.
We can draft up something. If you guys are okay with us putting in numbers like that, we would put in something that basically just would state, yeah, the incremental movement of the trailer doesn't reset the seventy two hour time period.
Yeah.
Uh if stay within there, it's bound to be sort of, I don't know all those lines.
I think those two modifications.
Okay, seventy two hours. Do you write that down? Okay, great.
Would we be able to approve uh the ordinance with those two modifications then?
Well, I would make that motion.
Okay.
Then move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to approve uh ordinance twenty twenty three thirty two oh four. Two modifications discussed. Any further discussion?
Or is your department gonna regulate this or enforce this ordinance?
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving forward with the ordinance twenty twenty three thirty two oh five.
So this one uh actually amends, uh but it does, uh actually we amended it by repealing it and just putting in a new one. But uh you'll see. But, uh, you'll see on the red, so, uh, Chief and I were talking about there, kind of, we didn't. State where we should be putting the stickers on these, and so we kind of did it in one uniform place, so we weren't searching around these. Vehicles to find the sticker, uh, and make sure that it was unobscured, and then also that the flag, um, some flags. Are in a spot where you can't necessarily see them, so we had talked about how do, how do we need to have those, um.
And so we weren't even affixed to the vehicle.
Yeah, like, yeah, I think some people just had them, um, so, uh. We decided that we would, you know, request that the flag be affixed to the vehicle in such a manner that it's at least six feet off the ground, not off. The roof or anything, and clearly visible while in the vehicle's motion, so just kind of have it on a. Stick, not stick, but you know what I mean, with the flag so that they could, they could see that, and then we did build in, uh, we put in here worksite. An exception is a worksite. Work site utility vehicles engaged in the act of snow removal or horticulture duties are excluded from the C two of the ordinance. Um, I think we were talking about more so when I, when we say horticulture, I'm thinking the people who water the, uh, water the flowers.
Gray weeds on the street.
Yeah, yes, that was all that. And I think. Ask about agronomy.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about the.
Oh, okay, I'm sure. Okay, great. So this was not terribly difficult, we just kind of needed to clarify a few things.
I have, my only, my only thought on this one is, um, like the six feet tall top or bottom of the flag. Um, I'm I'm being technical, but, uh, at the golf course, if you, if, for instance, if you drive your. Golf cart to the golf course, there's, there's low hanging limbs and branches that can catch those flags. Um, so if it, I mean, maybe six feet might be a little bit high to carry, I don't know.
We just went off the standard side by side, which is five foot, and we figured a foot above it, so you can see it from three sixty is the reason we decided that.
Could we use a brighter color flag and not have it so high?
Uh, I'm good with.
I mean, I I like, really, like, I I think, you know, a foot above a golf cart and catching, you know, your flag getting caught on limbs, which, I mean, you can't. I'm just.
Yeah, the only problem is though, is that a lot of those, you know, if they're not even affixed to them, or if they're affixed to the back of them. Nobody, our officers can't see those, um, if it's flapping just on the back. I didn't think a foot above it was that terribly high.
And maybe it's not.
But I'll go check, mine's right outside.
I actually noticed trees on the way home, like.
I think, I think there could be a way to where it could be a, it, there's, there's a way to attach it without it being criminally affixed, where if you get to the golf course. Take it down, and when you get back to the street.
Uh, my, my. So we can see it three sixty.
It happens, yeah.
Fairway's green, it's not a problem.
Even if you quit running things in the trees, you wouldn't have a problem, so. Alright, so yeah, I, I mean, we're, we're not trying to make anything more complicated, just so that the officers can see them all the way around.
Right.
If you have this, there's a lot of, you can't see.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, there's a lot to go down my street, and like, whoa, there it is, and it's like, you're not off the back of it, so.
I do think if it was a brighter color, it would, I mean, they, they're really pretty blended with most. Vehicles anyway, because most vehicles are dark colored, not that I'm a fan of neons or anything, I'm not at all, but they're obviously, it's easier to see.
Okay, sure.
Anyway.
Do they change colors each year?
Go with the forty of, or correct?
Yeah, but if it's, I mean, like, some communities use orange flags, and it's a safety feature, so that you can see them coming, you can't see it, it's. More for safety and compliance, I guess. I move to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-three, thirty-two.
So move back Commissioner Jackson, second week Commissioner Belton to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-three, thirty-two oh five, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to ordinance twenty, twenty-three, thirty-two oh six.
Okay, so, um. Basically, what had been going on is when the chief came in, uh, and we had been kind of working on it prior, but evidence, uh. We had quite a bit of old evidence that had been laying around, whether that was. Code vehicles, whether, you know, whatever that may be, so we've been working through disposing of all of that stuff. We've had some stuff there for a very, very long time, um, and so, uh, we're working on an actual. Policy and actual process in which to do that, and that's, that's what we have here, um, however. We, uh, when we were doing this, the sections got jumbled up, so we will correct those, you'll see. Uh, and one of them, it refers to a section that actually isn't even there, um, so actually, Chief just showed we worked it. Uh, because what we were doing was kind of cutting out some of the fat from some of these that we had referred to, and in the process, we kind of, the sections got messed up. Um, for example, like where it says, except, as provided in section four, when it comes to disposing of this stuff. Well, section four technically, basically, uh, it's the, uh, section four of C. Um, where we wouldn't, any items determined to be contraband, we're obviously not going to auction off drugs and explosives. As cool as that sounds, we're not gonna do that.
You made her money maker.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, like, we make so much money off that box of hand grenades we come. Um, so we will, we do need to redo that, it doesn't change, uh, anything within the, um. Uh, the ordinance, I do apologize, I, as we were looking through that, I was like, oh, boy, I think everything shifted all. Uh, so we will get that fixed, but really what this does is kind of just memorializes our process. So that we can actually start getting rid of this stuff, we have money, uh, that's been sitting there, and so. What we had done while we were going through all the stuff, we realized a lot of that stuff were district court cases that had been disposed of years ago. But we never got an evidence release, or we never had requested it, or they had asked for it. So it's just stuff that it just kind of sat there for a long time, so it needs to be. Uh, disposed of in a fashion that, and by law, we can, if it's not, um, uh, reclaimed, we can actually auction that stuff off. Uh, so. That, what that does is kind of help us with that, uh, outlines our procedure. Always good to have that stuff in writing as to how we're gonna take care of that, but again, I apologize when we were working these, everything kind of got. A little messed up, and I just simply didn't catch what the sections were all, so I do apologize for that.
How, how long has stuff kept now? Because there's not an order. I mean, ninety days, if you're in jail. I know, I'm not trying to be the what-if person, I'm just, like, if you're in jail and you can't go get your property for three months.
So it also depends on the case, once the case is resolved.
Uh.
Then the judge can sign, uh, an order, either give that property back or destruction order, or that property be destroyed. So it kind of depends on, it's case by case.
Yeah, um, so some of them might go on for years, and there's also situations where, um, some of the stuff that is seized, the state. Like in a, in a, like a drug case, if there's money or there's different things, they may actually ask for that to be turned back over, you know, for them to be able to keep. They can do that with cars in certain instances too, so it's gonna be kind of a case by case basis as to how that goes. So, you know, we wanted to have something in writing that gives us kind of a, a number there, but knowing. You know, like ninety days, we may, you know, that's, that's a, that's not gonna be the case for a lot of new cases, but a lot of this is trying to clean up. Years and years of backlog stuff that's still.
So when I started, there's some stuff in the evidence room from nineteen ninety-five.
Right, well, that's why I wondered, I mean, does it, i- is ninety days appropriate, or should it be like one year?
So, so, no, it, by, by statute, ninety days is appropriate, or if it's held by court, but the courts.
Yeah.
And we know, I mean, we, when we arrest someone or whatever, we seize that property, we know. The timeline is gonna be, because we have to get a destruction order from the judge before we can even destroy that property. Now, like, file property, all that stuff, ninety-eight days is good enough, and it can be either, um, sold or, um, like bicycles. We had twenty-some bicycles that I just donated to the resource center that had been there for ten years, so ninety days, it keeps that. That evidence room flowing, it keeps it clean, besides the court stuff that is held by that particular case. Did that make sense?
Watch True Crime Podcast. I don't listen to True Crime. I'm, I'm just trying to, like, as a citizen, like, I've never been arrested. And you stole my stuff while I was in jail.
Yeah, no, so, so Amy, when, when, when you get arrested. No, and the reason why I smile at you when you ask that, I was like, well, that's a good question, like, how long do you keep hold, well, we've kept a hold of it for decades.
I also, what, what's a three hundred and sixty-five day?
Trying to keep room in my evidence room, because it, there is no, there was no room.
Yeah.
There's.
Well, it's been there from nineteen ninety-six.
Yeah, like homicides and stuff like that.
Yeah, you have to keep forever.
We have to keep that forever.
Yeah.
So there are certain items we're bound by law to keep.
Yeah, and doesn't some stuff gets impounded versus put into evidence? And so the only things that were put into evidence specifically, that would be part of this.
Yes, exactly, like the impound stuff, we'd had stuff back there for a very long time too, Chief started really getting that stuff moved out. I think one lady, there had been a car impounded for like ten years, and when we finally got a hold, she's like, well, I've been looking for that, and really?
We're down to seventeen vehicles left out of forty-seven.
I'm moving to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-three, dash thirty-two oh six.
Move by Commissioner Belton, second week Commissioner Wentz to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-three, thirty-two oh six, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion pass.
Thank you.
Moving on to league voting delegates.
And the League Annual Conference is October seventh, three ninth, in Wichita this year, I did email some information to you out. I believe it was this morning or early afternoon, uh, may not have had a chance to look at it, that's okay, we can table this item, we can, but each year we get two. We're allowed two voting delegates, the annual business meeting is usually held around noon on the Monday at the conference, it'll be Monday after nine. Typically, I'll attend the conferences, I'll be labeled as one voting, voting delegate, and then we'll have a commissioner that also attends the conference, that'll be the second voting delegate, and then we'll, uh, assign. Two alternates in case we're unable to go, and what the voting delegates do is they listen to. The information that I have information on the statement of municipal policy that the league puts out, which is the, uh. Guiding document for the lobbying efforts for legislative session that year, and the voting delegates will vote on that. This year, there's also some bylaw changes and a few other things that will be voted on as well, so. Conference is pretty good, um, I did send you out the link that has the schedule for all the sessions that are happening this year, they do look to be pretty good. You know, speakers are generally pretty good, networking is great, so, um, I don't know if you've had time to take a look at that or decide if you want to go. We will typically let it to allow two commissioners to attend at once, and that also keeps us below a quorum, which is helpful. Uh, we need to let the league know before September twenty-second who our voting delegates are. The cost for the conference goes up another twenty-five dollars after August twenty-fifth, so I think it'd be helpful to. Um, I identify the voting delegates for sure by the first meeting in September, if you're prepared to discuss that tonight, we can, if you want to table it next year, that's fine as well.
I noticed on that league, uh. Link, they don't have the breakout sessions listed, what they're gonna do. Which are the really, to me, the really interesting things to go to.
Do you think we should wait?
Yeah, I would recommend we wait until you see. If we can do it and still pay the cheaper price.
And August sixteenth meeting, they'll give us that window of time.
Yes.
So.
I went, watched your, it was very good, so I would recommend.
Yeah.
But I like the breakout sessions.
And those were really good, so.
Look at the motion table this thing.
I would move to table the league voting delegates to our August sixteen.
So move back Commissioner Belton, second week Commissioner Wentz to table. The appointment of voting delegates for the two thousand twenty-three League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes, moving on to managers' reports.
Make this first, thank you for allowing me time, I'm, my family, much needed, much relaxing, um, I did leave the twentieth, so right after the last commission meeting. I came back this Monday, so I was still working through emails, inbox, catching up with staff, and just really want to say a huge thank you to the staff too. Things moving while I was still on, they did a great job. Um, also just a reminder of the community education retreat for U S D three 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 tomorrow night at the middle school, gives you a chance to explore the familiar model. Middle school and hear a little bit about what the school's doing, um, related to education for this year, there is an R S V P. Uh, that they've requested, so if you haven't had, so you're just going to please be on their board office. First day of school is August sixteenth, why is that important to us? Because traffic patterns changed tremendously in this community, so just encourage everybody to be. Mindful of that on August sixteenth, that the traffic patterns will be changing, we have to slow down and allow a little bit more time and be mindful of school zones. Also, I noticed that some of the college students are starting to return, um, especially the volleyball players for sure are back already. And I believe they start classes the following week, I think move-in day, I want to say is fourteenth, thirteenth, um, move-in day for the college, so. That will be a very busy time here in the community too, and just encourage everybody to welcome the, the students of Polytechnic College back to our team. Happy to answer, any questions if you have any?
Uh, you may have covered this, and I may have missed it in email, but what about the light on eleventh, did that get fixed today, just be, will it be fixed before school? I'm gonna let Fuller answer that one during his time. Okay, okay.
Staff reports, or I'm sorry, you get it, but. Staff reports.
Last week, I had a technician on them, and, um, I guess after he left that day for working on it and trying to diagnose what was wrong. It went haywire, and Jim had to go out, I guess it was running through the cycles really quick, he said he's never seen that happen before. And it wouldn't put itself in flash, normally when something happens, it automatically goes to flashing, so everything can function still somewhat properly. Um, we figured out the problem, so tomorrow morning, we will be saw cutting the outside northbound lane. And, uh, replacing the lip in it. So, hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, that'll be back to normal.
And it fixes the timing issue too?
That, probably not that, I will probably have to do myself, go and reset all the time, back to what it was.
You don't wanna get stuck in eleven street.
I mean, I kind of like it right now, because you can go whatever, but during school, it's gonna be a nightmare, yeah, I don't like, yeah, like.
Big city traffic, here we go. They go.
So back to the school zone thing, we are honoring elevens, like, and it, it doesn't get fixed. We're gonna put X Patrol out there, because it's gonna be a nightmare for traffic, um, but I'm confident Fuller's gonna get it fixed for us, so. Also, we are, uh, I asked Fuller if a week before school starts, if we could, um, start flashing the lights at the old middle school. Because that's gonna be open soon, and just get people aware of, we're gonna have a twenty mile an hour school zone there again. So I think that that will help, and we're also gonna put our, um, speed board up out there as well. Um, they're gonna move it this week sometime out there, um. Devin and I will be coming in early, um, we'll be working with patrol as far as school zones for the first couple of weeks, just to get everybody back to.
Education.
Yes, yes.
Back to school.
Yes. So hopefully, and a cup, and then, of course, I got, um, hopefully by, in September, we'll have my guys back from the academy, so we'll actually have two on school zones from here on out, but. We're, we're just about there, so.
Good.
Um, I just want to pass along that last week, the state came in and, um, inspected the animal shelter, we passed. Um, she talked about some of the issues that we're aware of, and we're addressing, and we're getting prices on, so we can move forward to get them fixed, but. She was very pleased, um, she said, we're one of the few, um, shelters that doesn't, the smell doesn't hit you right when you walk in, so, um. Jody has done a great job keeping it clean, and, and animals been down too, but, so state was real pleased, we're. Um, got the list of deficiencies that we gotta fix, but, um, we'll get those wrapped up here by, hopefully by the end of the year and get things moving on, so. We actually learned some things from her too, so it helped us know what we should prepare for, what to buy as well, so.
You said by end of year?
Well, I hope to have it for them, but I'm just allowing for ordering and.
Oh.
You know, because we got some cages, we gotta buy, I don't know what the timeline is on some of that stuff. I, I'd like to have a whale, wait on for them, but seems like anything we work right now has been delayed and delayed, so I'm just.
Yourself.
I'm giving myself some time, so.
Or was this a regularly scheduled?
Yeah, so they do it every year and a half, for two years, um, she won't be back till another year and a half from now, so she wasn't too worried about us. And what was nice about her, she said anything that we're looking at purchasing, we can take a picture of it, send it to her, and she'd be like, yeah, I do this, we do that, so. We're working pretty close with her to get everything fixed back up, the way that she need.
Second question, I'm just, I'm curious, and I'm not gonna be able to meet, meeting tomorrow, what is the plan for, what is the drop-off, like? Like, what's, what's the middle school look like? It's just been so long since we've all, like, how is that traffic gonna line up?
That's a good question, I'm trying to get ahold of the school right now, to kind of see how that's all gonna lay out. I mean, Devin and I drove it today, kind of thinking how they're gonna do it, but wanna talk with them to make sure that we're on the same page.
Okay.
Yeah, we really don't know what that looks like yet, but.
So I think it could be really helpful to have some folks directing traffic. You know, I mean, the elementary school at this point is pretty well, now then, but whether that's school staff, law enforcement, combination of that, as folks are getting closer, that I know one of those streets is one way anyway, so how do we keep that flow going to where we're not all?
Yeah, and, and I was gonna stop by the school board tomorrow and, and see if I can talk to someone who maybe has those answers for us. Thank you.
We recall earlier this year, um, did a little truck swap with the police department, their control vehicle with the parks. Um, here this week, we've had some other problems with it. Um, one of them's fixed, but another one we don't know yet, it just happened, Jill, we haven't had a chance to get on it, so we may be sending out bids sooner than later. We're planning on, on the board.
Any other staff reports? Hearing none? Commissioner comments?
I have a question on the ball fields, like, when they're rented, um, does anybody, for an event, does anybody go out there and check on the event, or once it's rented, it's like their problem, per se, I mean.
As far as
Um.
Ability, bathroom.
All, all of the.
Well, it's been all with our one room kind of event anyways.
Okay.
So if you'd have a tournament, it's a full day event, we check on it three, four times throughout the day.
Okay.
Uh, but your bathrooms, um, they usually use their own concessions, um, like the All-Star game, the, uh, our facility, our pictures, bathroom pictures, um, they don't run out, I mean, they last say a month, both they were those big roles, um, so they wouldn't run out, so, um, but, you know, Bobby and I and Jared will talk a lot, so they're pretty quick to call if something does happen, block it, or back up for someone bad, but, you know, those quick turnaround events, like you were.
Okay, and whose call is, like, since you brought up the All-Star game, there were some pretty big puddles, um, and the oh, I think it was the north field was pretty, pretty muddy and water standing. I know it's been an issue since, for years, uh, whose call is that to say this event is not happening, cause you're not tearing up our field? Or do they just, like, they were with brooms and stuff trying to get the field dry enough to play?
Yeah, it's, uh, the facility's here to monitor Jared's, um, Jared was out there at five thirty that morning, spreading a quick dry and um, working the field, trying to get it in, they still wanted to start at ten o'clock, so, um, that event is their event. So if they still want them to get in, or, you know, it's up to them, as long as the field is playable, then being safe enough to go ahead. Uh, I know Reggie was brewing water out of the dugout, helping Jared out, um, he's out there by himself most of the time, um, I was going to, but, um, the other muddy areas are, you know, from that inch and a half or whatever we got the day, night before, so.
Yeah. Actually, on, on the contrary of that, I mean, just, um, there was a lot of did, a, a lot of people that expressed dissatisfaction from the state baseball game getting canceled because of the rain. And, I mean, because people wanted to have it here, um, had planned on being here, and then it got moved to Clifton, um, and they hurried and got their field ready, um, and they had gotten significantly more rain than us, and, and we canceled, so, I mean, with, with things like that, you're gonna have, you're gonna have people upset regardless, sometimes, but I did, I mean, on along with that too, I have heard, and, and possibly is probably because of, um, rentals, that sometimes the lights are getting left on, so that would be the only thing, like with um, I mean, like, if people are renting it, that they're aware of how to turn on and off the lights, I guess.
Yeah, and, and those, you know, Bobby, they've done it the last couple of years, they, and they know about that type of stuff, even though it shouldn't rain to night games, but, um, yeah, I've now went over with Matt Knox for the state tournament, over all that stuff, and
Yeah.
And all that.
And I, I have no idea when it was, so I can't.
Yeah, and that district tournament, or district game was completely different scenario of the timing of rain and how much we got, and our possibilities of making a call.
Right, and I don't disagree with that, I'm just, like, on the, it's kind of contrary to, to that other situation, I guess, and so it's interesting to your perspective on that.
Do you ever, like, off-season, do you work the fields to, I mean, obviously you don't want water standing on them at fall, but okay.
Yeah, try to re-crown and try to actually re-level our pain about every three years, the scenery it takes, and how much you tear it up, just to get that much done, but we got conditioner every year to it, um, for management, but it's many games they're playing on those two fields in the month of June, those puddles get ground up to powder, and that's what gets mushy. So, yeah.
Oh, really good question. Just want to thank the, uh, members of the police department that were out, uh, for the National Night Out last, last evening. Uh, I know our neighborhood was really appreciative, uh, the officers to stop by, and and I really appreciate just how casual the engagements are, um, I really think that that was sort of the, the purpose of National Night Out was to increase community engagement, certainly having law enforcement as a part of that, so the community oriented policing, so, um, it was just, it was just nice to see people getting together and, and, uh, you know, seeing our law enforcement's assets instead of, you know, people are giving us a hard time, that's great, so, appreciate it. Anything else?
Move to a adjourn.
Move back Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Belton to adjourn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes, meeting at the adjourn.